What's that? A blank paper.
Yeah, you got it right there.
Yes.
Tim Moore, you want to hold that side table in there?
Huh?
Is it, is it, you could stretch this thing?
Strong enough.
Stretch it for you. Only one time. Good evening. Thank you for attending. This is our monthly city council meeting of the city of Uniontown, April 1st, 2021, at 4:30 PM. Roll call?
Mr. Gaddy?
Here.
Mr. Palumbo?
Here.
Mr. Vasaki?
Here.
Mr. Shulon, Mayor Gerke?
Here. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under your honor, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
An executive session was held on March 22, 2021, at 4:00 PM for personnel reasons. I have a few comments before we get into this evening's business. Just FYIs. We have a cleanup day for the city of Uniontown on April 24th, that's a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We'll have more information on my Facebook page and on the website. And we're looking forward to that. The last one was successful. We're looking to see this one to be more successful. Bailey Park, I want to thank again Joe Walkus for his hard work at Bailey Park. He makes it look really good and you know that, Joe. He just does a wonderful job. And he, you know, he works countless hours down there. He's a real asset to the city. And again, thanks, Joe, for all your hard work. Just about the Uniontown Boys Baseball Team. We're going to have the schedule on the bulletin board. We'll post it on the website. I do know this, next game is Tuesday afternoon at 4 o'clock, Bailey Park. Come out and look at our nice park and support our Red Raiders. That's a special place in my heart. I think everyone knows that. I was talking to Brian from WMBS Radio, and we're going to do a few games, broadcast them, but go on down and see our Red Raiders play. Always get comments about the Sheepskin Trail, where we are on this. I'm looking forward to getting this completed this year, and I think with some help from the community, we're going to get that, that dream's going to come true. We did have a meeting on March 10th here at Council Chambers with North and South Union Township, along with a representative of the National Road to discuss which ways we could work together to make this dream come true.
Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor, for his work on the Sheepskin Trail.
Oh, absolutely. The city's applied for Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant to assist with our portion of the trail. Of course, the railroad deal is going to come to completion sometime near the end of June. Is that correct, Tim?
That's what we anticipate. We're just waiting for the PUC to issue the final order approving the settlement between all the parties.
So this summer sometime, we'll own it, as you're saying?
After, after they approve, then that's when we get a transfer to us from the railroad, which we would anticipate sometime this summer. Yeah.
And again, we'll keep everyone updated as information becomes available about the Sheepskin Trail, but we haven't forgotten about it. That's all I have. Comments on agenda items only, Ms. Marshall?
I have received no comments for agenda items only.
Very good. Ms. Hodge, Treasurer's Report, please.
Good evening. We started our collection process on March 1st, and on March 3rd, we received changes from the Tax Assessment Office to update parcels and/or change ownerships. And since the changes needed to be manually inputted because of our rack system, we had some errors. Also, we are still receiving return mail that the post office was unable to deliver because of address changes and no forwarding and other items as undeliverable or deceased. We also have been working to try to get these tax information back in the mail to our residents as well as our businesses, so they will not be without their taxes, so they could be, begin to pay. We also received some tax bills with no tax values or assessment information, and I have been working with the Tax Assessment Office to figure out why this has occurred. This year, we have received numerous checks without the correct date, amount, and without signatures. We're asking that our residents and businesses, please, before you mail them, to make sure that this information is correct, because we cannot process them. And we had to hold batch, some batches, in order to do this, because we have received some in the mail, and then we have no phone numbers, and we try to look on Google and try to get their addresses or their phone number that we could reach out to them. I've even tried to contact their banks to see if the bank would contact the customer, so that they could call our office, so that we could get this handled in a timely manner. This being said, a lot of the residents did reach out to me that did not sign their checks. I had to either go meet them, or they came into the office to get this done. Also, I had to go meet a couple businesses who sent their payments in, but didn't pay the full amount, partial payments, and so I met up with them to get, so that we could get these payments processed. Our process is here to help our taxpayers, and we are doing everything possible to achieve this. Everyone may not understand the process, but I am available to discuss any concerns that you may have. I ask that any of our residents or businesses, or anyone has any questions or concerns, that they reach out to us, so that we can help them go through this process much easier. Please remember that the Treasurer's Office is open for your convenience from 7:45 to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, to make your payment. After 3:00 PM, because we are actually doing our process of closing out for the day, you will need to make your payment in the Dropbox. But please remember, no cash should be put in the Dropbox. Remember, if you didn't start the payment plan by March 31st, this option is no longer available to you. The discount period is still from March 1st, 2021, through April 30th, 2021, and that is the first number on your blue ticket. The face period is from May 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2021. The penalty takes affect July 1st, 2021, and the last day to make your payment for December is December 30th, 2021. If you have any questions or any concerns, please contact my office, 724-430-2905, or email me at ahodgeatlanticbbnnet or utcitytreasurehodge@gmail.com. I'll take any questions or comments that you need, or any information that you would like to discuss. We are willing, we are willing vessels to help you get through this process. We had a couple errors last year. I had talked to our Solicitor. I have got every, all the information. We plan to meet one day next week or the following week, that we can turn this information over to the Tax Claim Bureau. So there was a couple residents who, they got their, saying that they didn't pay their taxes for 2020. We found the mistakes. I contacted the Solicitor, and we're going to go ahead and get that taken care of, so that our residents can be at ease about that. Does Council have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. That's all I have. Ms. Marshall?
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept a report of the treasure for the month of March 2021, being the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the minutes of the March 4th, 2021 regular council meeting, being the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the city of Uniontown on March 2021 invoices in the General Fund, $61,925.81; Sewer Fund, $7,689.67; Recreation, $1,310.92; Highway, $8,756.65; Off-Streets, $11,679.49; Community Development, $87.60; Recycling, $455.67; Library, $16,667. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, Mayor and City Council members, please authorize a refund to the following taxpayers for LSD tax. Taxpayer Melissa Abbott, 4361 National Pike Merkley's firm, paid $24 to LSD tax, and she did not make more than $12,000. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, to request that City Council approve a refund payment for the following landlord registration fee. They recently sold, they recently sold this rental property, which is now a private residence, to Michael Alexic in the amount of $25. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, a resolution of the City of Uniontown, Kamala's of Pennsylvania, authorizing execution of environmental review record forms and certifications for the Community Development Block Program, CDVG program. Whereas the City of Uniontown receives funds from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, the Act, and whereas the City of Uniontown, prior to the commitment of CDVG funds, is required to complete an environmental review record in accordance with program regulations, Title 24 CFR Part 58. And whereas the City of Uniontown has completed such review, and must provide applicable certifications of the PA DCD in order for the PA DCD to authorize the release of CDVG funds. Now therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, one, that the PA CDVG program environmental review record is hereby in all respects approved. City Clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of said environmental review record with the minutes of this meeting. Two, that the mayor, on behalf of City, Uniontown City Council, is authorized to execute the necessary exempt status determination, categorical exclusion certification, and environmental certification, and request for release of funds. Three, that the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Uniontown is authorized to submit the certifications to the PA DCD after all applicable public comment periods have expired. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Before you read the next three, Ms. Marshall, I'd like to say a couple things about the hiring of number 52, 53, and 54 resolutions. I'd just like to thank all the help to assemble the interview teams. Thank the interview team members that were, they took their time out of their daily scheduled interview on applicants. And speaking of the applicants, I want to thank all the applicants who applied for the jobs to take time out of their busy schedules. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Mr. Vasaki?
All right. I'd like to read these letters of recommendation here. Interview panel for Public Works One employee, conducted two interviews for the position on March 25th, 2021. Both candidates showed a willingness and strong desire to work in this position for the city of Uniontown. They both had similar experiences and training. After careful deliberation, the interview panel is recommending William Richards for the position of Public Works One employee. Mr. Richards expressed his ability to perform some of the difficult job duties that will be required in this position, giving him a slight edge over the other candidate. We believe that Mr. Richards will be the best candidate for the job. As per recommendation of the Board, I'd like to motion to hire Mr. Richards.
I'll second you.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire William Richards as a full-time Public Works One employee in the Sanitary Theater Department for the City of Uniontown, at a starting salary of $1396 per hour, effective April 5th, 2021, with full benefit package upon successful completion of a 90-day probationary period. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
This is the recommendation for the Director of Planning, Community Relations, and also the Community Development Coordinator. All of the interviewees are great candidates for the position offered. They are qualified, personable, and passionate about making Uniontown a better place. After careful deliberation, from the information submitted and interviews conducted on Thursday, March 25th, 2021, the interview committee has suggested the following candidates for the positions. Director of Planning and Community Relations, Laura Kutechak, Community Development Coordinator, Mark John. It was a tough decision, but after careful consideration, we felt that Laura and Mark are the best candidates for long-term betterment of the city of Uniontown. And then as per recommendations, I would like to motion that we hire Laura Kutechak for Director of Planning Commission, or Community Relations.
Do I have a second?
A second is, I'd like to recommend, or I've motioned to hire Mark John for Community Development Coordinator.
So is each of those hires a separate motion, Ben?
Yes. So we've kind of skipped over the first motion. So Mr. Vasaki made a motion to hire the recommended candidate of Laura Kutechak for the Director of Planning and Community Relations. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Mayor. Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Laura Kutechak as the full-time Director of Planning and Community Relations for the City of Uniontown, at a starting salary of $42.5, effective April 26th, 2021, full benefit package upon successful completion of a 90-day probationary period. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
No.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
And Mr. Palumbo, did I hear you make the second for the motion to hire Mark John as the Community Development Coordinator?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Mark John as a full-time Community Development Coordinator for the City of Uniontown, at a starting salary of $42.5, effective April 26th, 2021, with full benefit package upon successful completion of a 90-day probationary period. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept a recognition of Uniontown City Police Officer James Sabeau, effective March 25th, 2021. Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize payment of compensated absences to James Sabeau as follows. 52 big days, 23 vacation days, 3 days and 14 hours of personal days. 2021 accumulated days 46, 2022 accumulated days 6 days and 14 hours, with a total of 430 hours, with a plus his $2,100 clothing allowance, having him a total of $11,354.20. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize Almond Thatch to perform roof repair and coat entire roof at the Sanitary Theater Department garage at a cost of $6,500. Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, authorize the purchase of a new stripe drag team with scarifier infield drag feature to use at Baby Park Ball Field at a cost of $800. Mr. Palumbo?
Yeah, we really need this, and it's going to help things out a lot for not just Uniontown baseball, but any other baseball team that would utilize both fields, so, yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, that the City of Uniontown and Fayette County hereby request a Greenways Trails and Recreation Programs grant of $224,494 from the Kamala Fund Financing Authority to be used for Phase 1 development and construction of the city's portion of the Sheepskin Trail. This project is part of the larger Recreation Enhancement Plan in the municipality and within the county of Fayette. It is anticipated that the city of Uniontown will complete their section of the Sheepskin Trail in two days. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Thomas W. Gerke, Mayor, and Kim Marshall, City Clerk, the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Uniontown and Kamala Fund Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire part-time seasonal employees for park and recreation for grass cutting effective April 1, 2021, through October 2021, as needed. Jake Miller at a salary of a season of $10,800. Angelo Gaddy, $8.25 an hour, and Christian Vorcheck, minimum wage. Mr. Gaddy?
I abstained. For, you guys, they're all at the same time?
How, how could we handle that, Tim?
Doesn't matter. There's still enough people.
Is there? Okay.
I said abstain, because I.
You can do them all at the same time, right?
Yeah, you can. You can do them like that all at the same time. You would need to abstain. If they're all at the same time, you would need to abstain, though.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Palumbo?
These are the last, the same crew we've been using the last few years, working out really well. They know the city and play out what needs to be done, so they're no strangers to it. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Vasaki?
Just like Joey had said, I agree with 100%. Everything's been looking great, and might as well just keep the way it is, and I think they deserve it, so yes.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Being resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to compensate Joe Walkus $2,000 for grass cutting of all of Bailey Park for the 2021 season, effective immediately until October 2021. Mr. Palumbo?
I'll speak to this a little bit first. Mr. Miller was cutting Bailey Park for the last few years, and Mr. Walkus was doing the fields. Now we're going to have Mr. Walkus do all of the park at the same time as the field, so that everything's on the same, same page down there. And that's why he's, Mr. Miller's taking that pay decrease, and the money being given to Mr. Walkus for doing, taking, taking up more of the burden from Bailey Park, yeah. So, yes.
Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
And that's all I have there.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Monthly reports. Code Officer, Mr. Thomas.
Hey, good evening. For the month of March, 26 new code cases. We closed 21 positively, and we're carrying over 33 into April. The last month, I've been compiling a list of properties, which I think we need to demo. I'm up to 37 properties. Haven't done this all on my own. I don't want to take credit for other people's hard work. The fire chief has suggested some properties. I mean, I've done, gone out and done the research, looked at, and cataloged them and started the process, but Buck's done some work. The police department throws me some leads, and I'm so far, I have the 37 properties cataloged. I have the owners, the UPC number, and we have, if there's liens in the city. The sewage department helped me out with the liens. I gave them the list. Within three hours, they gave me the whole list back, yes or no, if there were liens. And also, on my, in my database, is are they or are they not on the repository to be sold, and Mark Raifel was a big help with that. So I don't want to take a lot of credit for a lot of people's work. This was the police department, the fire department, and Redevelopment Authority, and the sewage department kind of all helped me with that, so. But that's where we are with it. We have 37 properties. The next thing we need to do is sit down, figure out how much money we have, and prioritize the properties to be taken. And I, hopefully, we can do that in April, with any luck. Any questions?
I really appreciate your help, and you guys' hard work does not get one of us.
Well, I guess, no, you're very welcome. I just didn't want to say I did all this on my own. A lot of people had a hand in it. And Solicitor Wood's going to probably have a bigger hand in it later, as will K2 Engineering, but that's in the future. So the other questions? I'll, I'm out of here.
Thanks, Matt. Fire report. Chief?
Spoke with Joe yesterday, and he was sorry he wasn't going to be here today. Asked me to give his report for him. Last month, we had a total of 62 incidents for the fire department. Just real quick, five of them were structured fires, 11 of them were vehicle accident with injuries, and we had one, we assisted German Township with a trench rescue. That was a total of 62 total alarms. Couple other things. We advertised for the civil service, advertised for applications for the fire department. I guess the final date for them is on the 16th, and shortly after that, we want to schedule a civil service exam for probably right after the 1st of May. I spoke with the examiner, and he's all open. Everything's good for that. The new fire truck for next year's, or last year's grant, it's on track for delivery probably, it'll be probably December this year, January of next year. One thing I wanted to ask about, do you need help for Story Square Saturday? Who's doing, there's an Easter egg hunt or something in Story Square? Who's doing, there's an Easter egg hunt or something, Story Square Saturday?
Yes. Faith Assembly of God Church is doing that from twelve to four, or one to four. I don't know the exact hours.
All right.
That would be at Story Square.
Okay.
Mayor, did they, or, excuse me, did they request to shut the street down?
I don't know. I know they needed to shut something down, they were going to go. Do you know, Mayor?
Well, that was, that was my next question. You want me to assume regular duties here?
I don't know. They, they wanted to. Did we give one to you, chief?
I don't think I got a request. They may have, because they're doing all the street work.
Okay. I thought we did, chief.
Yeah.
Okay. Needless to say, I'll handle it, and Buck, I'll call you tomorrow.
It's all good. All right, anybody got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. Police report, Chief Cox?
Afternoon, everyone. During the month of March, the Uniontown Police Department responded to nine hundred calls for service. Breakdown of some of those calls include twenty-nine vehicle accidents, five assaults, four burglaries, nine disturbances, twenty-nine domestics, six drug offenses, twenty-eight harassments, eighteen shots fired calls, twenty-two medical assists, twenty-five disorderly conduct, seven suspicious activities, seventeen thefts, and served ten warrants. Officers made a total of twenty-seven arrests, issued twelve non-traffic citations, and sixteen traffic citations. Much of the month of March was spent by cleaning up and working on the investigations that were brought to a conclusion last week. I think an announcement was last Friday through the District Attorney's Office, where we assisted them with investigating numerous incidents that occurred in and around the Fayette County Jail. Other than that, I'm noticing that the call volume is picking up as it does when the weather gets nicer, so I expect that to continue to rise over the next few months. Any questions? Thank you.
As always, thanks for your service, chief. Public Works, Mr. Potulinski?
Hello. This month for the total sewage collection, they took in two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand twenty-two dollars and five cents. Also, we received the tap-in fee for the new prison. So that was a nice checker. It was nineteen thousand four hundred dollars for the tap-in fee, so that's good to get put back in. The demolition on the jail is supposed to start here sometime in the middle of this month, so they'll be getting on progress in that. As far as the sewage department, we've had a couple of breaks to deal with and sewer backups. That's always an ongoing process with the system. It's a little day and stuff, and everybody knows we have to start addressing that. Trying to improve our sewer collections and stormwater drains. I don't remember if I said last month, we got the tree picked up from down by the Uniontown High School, the bee tree. Everybody knows. That finally got cleaned up and disposed of. As far as that, they've been trying to keep the streets super going the best they can and keep the streets swept up and clean. Other than that, that's all I have, Russ.
Appreciate all the work you guys do. Kind of an unsung thing when you guys are the ones that have to go down to the sewers and clean. That's not fun.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. Do we have a, before I see Mark Raifel's not here, do we have a report from the redevelopment authority this month? If not, Ms. Marshall, did you get any public comments directed toward you?
I did, Mayor. Received one. Public comments this afternoon. In form of an email and form of a habit from Trey Mickens. If you'd like, I'll just read the comments. When I asked you questions prior to the last City Council meeting in March about properly posting the meetings for public view and commenting, you lied and stated that they were posted properly at the City Council meeting, which is on film, you. Also, it just so happens I took photos the day before the meeting took place, and there was nothing posted publicly for taxpayer engagement or to ask questions. Ms. Marshall, you were there. There was a problem. When asked about it, you lied. This is about personal responsibility. You guys claim that you've been making changes. What changes have you made? The City Council meeting, you clearly lied on record stating that you properly posted the agenda prior to the meeting, when there is clear proof you didn't. Mr. Webb, I also asked you about the City Council meeting stating how it's not legit. I also want to talk about all of your job descriptions. Who wrote the job descriptions for these two positions? By the way, the city clerk is a clerk, just a secretary, not an elected official. You should have no business dealings in management. How does a secretary and business manager relate to the same job description? Third, city code, there is no, third class city code, there is no city manager. Why are you acting as city manager? Laura, what's your background? Why were you at the last council meeting? And why was she listed as landlord consultant? And what are your qualifications for doing that job that no one knew about nor was it posted for others to seek opportunity? I see no documentation in any immediate posting this job. Mr. Gerke, what is Laura to you? Do you pay her as your personal assistant? Also, any other jobs that are posted are in the newspaper and put up for review. What changed over the years that you now need a communications director? The mayor stated before he took office that he didn't like Ms. Marshall. You stated you wanted Laura as your city clerk, so instead, well, we'll create a job position for you and take advantage of taxpayers. Where were these jobs posted in the budget? They weren't. You thought, well, you know one will catch us up and that we're okay with taking advantage of taxpayers. Shame on all of you. At worst, you're incompetent, and at best, you're conflicted. Change won't happen until we rid out the problems of the city and appoint people with integrity. The City of Uniontown deserves council members that will be honest and fully transparent to high-paying taxpayers. This won't happen until we rid all of the corruption out of the city and we put people in place that will do their job. I'm asking you to resign. Tim, is there any? I'm sure you, me, Tim, the mayor, and Ms. Rorbet. Is it, any comments to this, Tim, or just?
So that was submitted as public comment. So there's not a requirement that council respond to or address any of those questions. Just so council aware, you're not precluded from responding or answering any of those questions. But once again, there's no legal requirement that you respond to anything. It is a requirement, though, that we perceive and read public comment into the record as it's submitted to the city, so just want to make sure that that is kept with the, with the city's requirements.
Is there any other public comment, Ms. Marshall?
That's all I received, Mayor.
That's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown. The council adjourns to meet Thursday, May 4th, 2021, at four thirty PM. Mr. Vasaki?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddy?
Yes.
Mr. Palumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter.
Happy hour.